With us, we have a pledge of allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tim Hatten. Thank you, F.C. Establishing presence of quorum will have a roll call, Ward Two.
Here.
Ward Three.
Here.
Ward Four.
Here.
Mayor here, we do have quorum. First item on the agenda, citizens to be heard. I have got one card, citizen to be heard. Speaker participation instructions are provided at the beginning of the paperwork you have here. The Texas Open Meetings Act permits a member of the public or a member of the governing body to raise a subject that has not been included in notice of meeting. However, any discussion of the subject must be limited to a proposal to place the subject on the agenda for a future meeting, and any response to a question posed to the city council is limited to either a statement of specific factual information or recitation existing policy, which is Texas Government Code 551.042, and has not been posted on the agenda. If you'll come to the podium, please, sir, and give your name and address, you have three minutes, sir.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor, I'm Chris Beach. I work for the TIO Awards Association, and I reside in 2019 with the NABD program. My past out view, first page shows all the common areas of the reaches on TIO, including Aransas Bay. It's flat spring and the road is summer, we made a conclusion to reach one, the fourth, the sixth, and the seventh. This line will highlight in blue, it is five and nine hundred feet long, and deep on statewide areas of our shoreline.
... grant that put in a bulkhead there around 2,000. It's now the weakest portion of our shoreline. If you flip the page, end to end on that slide is pretty much the entirety of Reach Five. We did have one long steel groin that was installed as part of the rockwork this spring. The other four, the two in yellow and the two short green ones were never realized due to lack of funds. Next picture shows Reach Five as it merges into Reach Six with new rockwork. Next picture beyond that is Reach Five going back down to the north as it merges into Reach Four. All the rockwork along there is at plus seven on the NAVD-88 system. The bulkhead itself is at plus five. Next page, pictures of Reach Five on bayshore last week. You can see the water intrusion. We've got a marine activity on the backside of the bulkhead that was installed in 2,000. And then the last picture is looking back, back to the north, and you can see water that's pretty much come across the street. Last page was just a printout I got off the NOAA station. High point of water last week was plus 3.26. So that's pretty high for us. There was no wind activity. Thank goodness. We had wind activity with Alberta, we flooded badly. And in Reach Five, we had an active river, if you will, from Aransas Bay, across bayshore, and into the canal systems across the street. It was strong enough to carry the steel forms that were used to build that groin. So my proposal is simple. I'd like to get on the agenda for a potential and a protect grant because I feel like we meet some of the criteria for a protect grant. We would need sponsorship from the city. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. This is something we do need to address, and I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have looked into all the funding sources for Reach Five. We have not come up with a funding source. We can discuss the protect grant and look and see what's available. We've contacted the engineers to get a cost estimate of what they think we could improve. Yes?
Okay. Next item ceremonial matters, proclamations, employee recognition and such. First, introduction of the Rockport Police Department's new K-9, Roscoe, and Officer E.J. Garcia, handler chief.
Mayor, Council, thank y'all for the time tonight. I know that y'all have heard a lot about Roscoe, and I've been up here and spoke several times about him and Officer Garcia, and we've finally taken possession of him. We actually took possession of him first of October. And Officer Garcia and Roscoe just completed a four-week training at the Hill Country Dog Club, which is where Roscoe originated from. And you got back when, just last week, I believe? So just last week, and so we finally have him totally in our possession. And Officer Garcia and Roscoe are out working the streets currently, and so we are very happy to have him. And tonight, it's my privilege to introduce Roscoe and issue him his very own Rockport Police Department badge. And so I'm going to issue that to Officer Garcia.
Thank you, sir.
And we're very happy to have him. One thing I wanted to talk about about Roscoe, Roscoe is a drug dog, and he's also a dog that can also catch people for us. And so he's not, he's not the type of dog that you see that you can just come up and pet and walk up on. He's a dog that I keep distance from police dogs because I've seen what they can do to bad guys out there, and I don't want that to happen to me. So they're extremely loyal to their handlers and to their toys that he has underneath his arm there, which is what he wants. So we're happy to have Roscoe on our team. Today's his birthday, as a matter of fact. So today's his third birthday. And so he's three years old today, and Roscoe, happy to have him. We had a big crowd, we'd have a big applause. So thank you for your time and coming in, and we're happy to have him on our team. Appreciate you being there.
Thank you, Senator. We appreciate you. Roscoe is the officer that usually shows up before the guy gives up. That's the way that usually works.
They typically give up pretty fast when they're in the market.
Next item on the agenda is commendation, Rockport Police Department Administrative Coordinator Nikki Arnold for her diligent work successfully completing a three-year project converting the agency's records management system to a new system. Chief?
Mayor, Council, thank you again. Nikki Arnold, she's been well-known in our community for many years now. She's worked under three chiefs now, including yourself, Chief Stevens, and now myself. And it's hard to explain, but going through a records management system update for a police department is extremely tasking. And Nikki has taken on this, she's been working on it for over three years now. So it was early in 2021, then Chief Stevens started the process of changing from our old system, which was called PTS, and this is where all officers write their police reports. This is the system that we use, that communications uses to dispatch calls, our property room, everything that we keep is in our records management system. And we went to a new system with Tyler Technologies, and Tyler Technologies is the same company that has ENCODE and several other programs that the city of Rockport uses. This is actually a small part of the umbrella of Tyler Technologies, and we've been very happy with the program. We went live with it. How long has it been now?
October 15th.
So October 15th, and so we've been live with the program since then. Everything has kinks, and Nikki's been there all along, working with the company, and it's a really great program now. So if you don't mind, I'm going to read this commendation that Nikki very well deserved. Commendation from myself, Nathan Anderson, Chief of Police, to Nikki Arnold, Administrative Coordinator. This memorandum serves to acknowledge and commend your outstanding performance while managing the Rockport Police Department's conversion from the records management system PTS to our new system, Public Safety Pro. In 2021, the Rockport Police Department began researching a new records management system and ultimately decided on Tyler Technologies' Public Safety Pro program. This has been a proven system used by hundreds of agencies of our size across the United States. You took the initiative and through many obstacles along the way vigorously worked until and through our go-live with the program on October 15th, 2024. Your knowledge and dedication to the Rockport Police Department have enhanced the department and the city of Rockport on many occasions, from the hundreds of thousands of dollars awarded by your grant writing to information technology knowledge, raising funds for charitable organizations such as Blue Santa, knowledge of laws, TECO rules, and Freedom of Information Act, as well as many other systems used by the Rockport Police Department have all bettered our agency and made us one of the best agencies in the state of Texas, if not the United States. You are to be commended for your leadership and dedication to duty brought great credit upon yourself in the Rockport Police Department, and we're in keeping with the highest traditions in law enforcement. You have my most sincere appreciation personally and professionally for stepping up and leading the way. This is for you, this is your copy. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Following items may be acted upon in a single motion. No separate discussion or action on any of the items will be held unless called request of a member of the council. Since there's only one, it makes it fairly simple. Do you have? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Now, a call for vote, Ward One.
Aye.
Ward One, and here, Ward Two. Do we have? Ward Three.
Aye.
Ward Four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Next item on the agenda, ordinance is resolutions of public hearings. Consider the approval of Resolution 2024-28R, amending Resolution 2024-21R by appointing a city council member to serve on the convention and visitor bureau board and establishing term of office.
So at the last city council meeting, y'all appointed the members to the CBB, but you postponed the member, the city council member. So this resolution would be amending the other resolution and appointing a member of city council to the CBB. On the resolution, there is an error. The expiration is actually September 2025, not 2024.
All right, Chair.
Mayor, we postponed this one just to make sure that the mayor of our town is okay with being in this board. Before I formally nominate her. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mayor Pro Tim Hatten to the CBB Board.
All right.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. There being no other nominations, I'll call for a vote, Ward Two.
Aye.
Ward Three.
Aye.
Ward Four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Next item on the agenda, number five, other action and updates. Consider the approval of annual comprehensive financial report for the city of Rockport for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Mr. Sorrell.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Here tonight with our auditor, Patrick Hall. He's going to, he's going to do the audit report. This is, this is his first year to perform the audit as the city's external auditor. He was selected in March of 2024. We did a lot of cleanup, as we talked about last month, did a lot of cleanup and consolidation 2023, and we will continue to do so as we work through this and make improvements where we can. Patrick has a lot of ideas that we, that can help help us, and we are certainly open to any and all ideas to help make Rockport be the best that it can be, and our reports as clean as they possibly can be. I will sit up here, but I'll let Patrick do the report then.
Hello, Mayor, members of council. My name's Patrick Hall. I'm with the audit firm, P. Andrew Hall, LLC. I was formerly with Park Fowler, so I, this is the first year that I've done the audit under the new firm, but I'm familiar with the city of Rockport. As Robbie mentioned, we spent a lot of time in, when he says we're cleaning up stuff, we did spend a lot of time cleaning up, but it was, it's not necessarily anything like there were mistakes or anything, or just a lot of little, what we refer to as immaterial items that had kind of been sitting there, or so clean, so it was cleanup within the accounts and within the funds. So what we believe and were, as we present the report, it's just going to be a cleaner report, and we also had, several of the funds just had small little balances setting in them, and we'd been reporting those for several years, and there was, we cleaned them up and moved that money so that we reduced the number of funds. So it just makes the report much easier to read, I believe. And so with that being said, if you go to page one, the audit report, or the financial statements, annual financial report, page one is our opinion page. And if you look at the first paragraph of the opinion page, tells you what financial statements we're putting an opinion on. And it's basically the government-wide statements and then the, and then the fund statements. The report contains some other, what they call supplementary information, or required supplementary, like pension schedules and other documents that we don't necessarily put a full audit opinion on, but we do an in relation opinion saying that we believe they're fairly stated in relation to the financial statements in total. The second paragraph is the opinion paragraph, and we're issuing a unqualified or unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's what we refer to as a clean opinion. It's, it's what you want, it's the best opinion you can have. And basically what it's saying is that we believe, as presented, the financial statements are fairly stated. Then the rest of the opinion page, which is pages two through three, again, talks about auditor's responsibility, and we conduct the audit under professional standards, we exercise skepticism in our judgment, we perform tests to support balances, we look at the city, they have a concept that they refer to as going concern, and that is, will the city be here a year from the date the financial statements are issued? We give that consideration, of course, the city will be here. And then it again talks about the required supplementary information and the opinion in relation to. And then on pages 72, I believe it's 72, 73, and 75, those are the opinions that we issue on the federal awards, or what we refer to as a single audit. It's more of a compliance portion of the audit, so we have to look at your financial statements in whole and your control processes, and then the controls and your compliance with grant management. And we've issued basically clean opinions on both of those. There's one for an opinion in relation to governmental auditing standards, and then the other one is compliance with the specific program. The only, it's not really, it doesn't affect the opinion, but we do have a finding again that we had from the prior year related to, we just didn't meet the nine-month filing requirement with the clearinghouse to get the report in. We'll get it filed sometime, or this week, so it's, it's just, it's more a comment than anything that say, that could be a compliance component. You know, you're technically supposed to have it in nine months after the fiscal year end, or 30 days. Well, actually, they waived the 30 days after the audit report, just pretty much sticking with the nine, nine months. So that's the financial statements and the opinion. So again, issued unmodified, it's clean opinion. I'm not going to spend time going over the numbers because there's way too many of them, but what I would encourage you is to read the MDNA, which is on pages four through 12, which will give you a narrative of the city's financial performance for the fiscal year 22 and 23. You know, where the major expenditures were, major sources of revenue, and then also kind of a comparison of how you perform compared to your budget. And then on pages 31 through 57 are the notes to the financial statements. So when you're looking through the report, I would always encourage you, if you have a question on some of the numbers you see on the statements, refer to the notes because they always provide much more detail, and it may answer your question. So with that, that's the presentation of the audit. Happy to answer any questions if I can.
Counsel?
So the only potential issue was the fact that we just didn't quite get it done in the timeline that they wanted, but everything else is clean and added up?
Yes, that's correct.
That's fine.
And then Lorenzo and Robbie and I, we've talked about it, we're going to get started on the 24 here in the next month or so, so that one should be filed timely so we can make those go away.
I know that y'all have worked on this faithfully for two years, trying to get this all straightened out, and I know that it has been difficult and time absorbing, and I appreciate the work you've done on it. Thank you. Any question, other question, counsel?
I move to approve item five as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and two seconds. Any further questions? If not, we'll call for vote, Ward Two.
Aye.
Ward Three.
Aye.
Ward Four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Next item on the agenda, consider approval or application of the expenditures of the special revenue forfeiture fund associated with training, housing, and equipping Rockport Police Department K-9, Roscoe, to perform his duties. Chief?
Mayor and Council, as we discussed whenever we started the process of obtaining Roscoe, the K-9 made a promise that we weren't going to use budgetary funds in order to get the training necessary and get the equipment that we need for this dog, and we held true to that. So what we have used is we used our forfeiture fund account, which is, which is, these are authorized expenditures for this account for training and equipment for a police department, and there are restricted, there are restrictions on what we can spend these funds on, and these funds come from police cases where Chapter 59 of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure authorizes police departments to take forfeited funds from illegal narcotics sales and whatnot. And so we have, we have a balance in our account from that, that we utilize these funds, and we ended up spending a total of $8,467 thus far, and that was able to, we're able to get a crate for Roscoe, a ballistic vest for Roscoe, all of his training equipment that we use as leashes and whatnot, his food container, a dog house, and also a house that we're going to build at Officer Garcia's home in order to put Roscoe in. We do have more expenditures that will come up later that we'll bring to you ahead of time, and that's going to be to outfit the police vehicle in order to keep the K-9 in. But so far, we just need to ratify, or we're hoping to ratify, the $8,467.34 that we spent thus far on Roscoe.
Questions, counsel?
Chief, do you?
Have going forward is going to be for food and vet bills, which, which, as we discussed whenever we were getting Roscoe, that will be absorbed into our budget.
And the second, will there be any incentive pay for the, for Officer Garcia?
We are looking at incentive pay. It's been given to our HR Director, Casey, and we are looking at doing a certificate-type pay for the officer.
Other questions? Now, do I have a motion?
I move to approve item six as presented.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further question? Now, we'll call for a vote, Ward Two.
Aye.
Ward Three.
Aye.
Ward Four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. I'd like to point out right quick for the benefit of those that worry about city budgets and so forth, that this did not come from tax money, this came from people who are using illegal funds for drug or other criminal activity, and it is a great program that the state has had for years and years, and it's a big benefit to the taxpayers for what you can do. Thank you, chief.
Exactly right, thank you.
Item number seven, consider approval of amendment number one to the agreement with DLF II Inc. to exchange the size of the fiber handholds that connect our city and county facilities for an amount not to exceed $7,400. Ms. Henry?
Yes, sir, Mayor, Council, thank you. This agenda item is to prepare the conduit, where the conduit goes through these handhold, which is basically boxes where all the cables come through and get connected at three locations, only one of which we are paying for. It's additional $7,400 for a different size than what was originally drawn up by the engineers because the company that's being utilized didn't have that size. So, and IT has reviewed this, and the size is adequate for what we're using.
Any questions, counsel?
Kimberly, in looking at the counties, I guess, change, change whoever, for that, theirs was significantly more expensive.
They're doing two, and we only have one.
Okay. Is that the same option? Can it all be?
They're, they're, I think one of theirs is at a little different size because they have more going through it. Yes, sir. I think the one from their, that's closer to their county courthouse is larger, if I'm not mistaken.
Any other question?
We're good, they're all going to work together, aye.
Any other question?
How many motions are for the other item?
Seven.
A motion, I have a second. Have a motion and a second, any further question? Also vote, Ward Two.
Aye.
Ward Three.
Aye.
Ward Four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Next item, consider approval of construction change directive number five with Teal Construction related to the new city hall project.
Yes, again, this one is still regarding the city hall, but this is under the Teal contract. And again, this change directive is not securing the cost, it is securing the piece of the project. So this includes three pieces of the project, one of which is CPR number 89.1, which is window shades. We had some reductions, some additions, and we're still discussing those items as far as which, what the count is. The count's still up in the air between PJL and Teal, but we need to move forward with this and get these ordered. So we're asking in advance for y'all to approve this change order, or excuse me, not this change, or this change directive inclusive of CPR 89.1. So we can, as soon as we have the count secured, we can act on it and don't have to wait for another council meeting. So we are working on that due diligently. And these are the shades that go in all the windows. Most of them are single shades, and they're just grayed out kind of stuff, but then in certain areas where the municipal court is, council chambers, and certain other areas, the jury, where they're sequestered, those are blackouts. So when the court's in session, they would be blacked out, so people on the outside cannot see in at all.
Questions, counsel?
I guess my only concern is there's just no financial statement on that, and so is there like to exceed, just because we don't want to?
So right now, they're down to 5,700 and some change, just under 6,000 for that particular CPR number, and that's where they're at right now. We're still, within the packet was the additional information, so you can see kind of where PGL, PGAL, and the city are pushing back and asking them to revise their counts. So honestly, yes, ma'am, I apologize, but all these CCDs are that way. We are asking almost, we're asking to continue moving on with the work while we negotiate those prices.
You're not signing over a blank check? There's a dollar amount associated with it, or you're?
Yes, ma'am.
But the dollar amount is still in dispute.
And if you just can come in front of council in the future and just let us, or, you know, just let us know even through communication, what you guys decide on these.
We are tracking all the CCDs, this, what is being presented, of course, this is item one of three items on CCD number five being presented tonight, but we are tracking all the CCDs separately, and when we have one of them completed, we'll send, we'll bring back information to you, but all of those are still exceeding, outstanding. But all of those are still exceed, outstanding of at least one item, if not more. So as soon as we get information on a CCD that's complete, we can forward that information to you. Yes, ma'am. That was CPR number eighty-nine. CPR number ninety-two is the elevator codes. When this, we came to y'all before with some elevator to have the inspection done again. But there is a cost related to getting the codes up to date. So when the building was designed, it was under one set of codes. But now the codes have changed in twenty-twenty-two because this was started in twenty-twenty as far as being designed. And so because those elevator codes have changed, we are having to make some code changes to some electrical thing in the bottom. I don't understand all of it. But this one, again, it does have a cost figure to it. Right now, that one is just under thirteen thousand dollars. And we, that one is still pretty, being discussed, but that's pretty tight on that one. So the third item is the CPR number ninety. And again, right now, that's at twenty-six thousand and some change. And from the packet, you can see that we are still discussing those items. And you'll see Architects's, which is under PGAL. You'll see their notes on there as to what we're still discussing. But again, right now, we do have a dollar figure on that, but we're trying to negotiate that now.
So these three that you're requesting, I think to clarify what she was saying, is you're asking us to proceed, but we're not agreeing tonight on these dollars. There's just an approximate dollar associated with it, negotiations are still going on.
Yes, sir.
What they're asking for, I know we're still within our budget on this particular.
Yes, and once we included our current year budget, yes, sir, we are still within those budgets.
Questions, counsel?
I have full faith in you, that you'll do, you'll squeeze out every penny you can for us. I thank you, Kimberly, for doing that for us.
Thank you, sir.
That's it, mayor, I move to approve item eight as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any further questions? No, no, call for vote, Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number nine, consider approval of amendment one to the agreement with Alliance for Community Services, providing audiovisual security equipment and installation for an amount not to exceed four hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Ms. Henry.
Yes, sir, this one's a hard one. The attached information has some details of why they are requesting additional funds. I will say right up front, one of the things we did change was, in their original bid, was a system that you would have one, I forgot the name, I remember it was CAT six going into one area, and then it expands, expands out from there. Hold on one second, I'll tell you the name. Edge Network, thank you, Bob. And that, when that was being presented, we ran with it, but Bob and his team have reviewed that. They're not happy with the Edge system, so we, we referred to it as a home run system. And so there's a lot more cables involved and a lot more manpower involved to get it there. But that was almost a hundred thousand of this right here, was just us changing to that home run system. Some of the other items that were in here were, were things we were testing and working through. And then, of course, there was just the fact, the fact that this process has taken so long. It has extended a lot of man hours on ACS's part as well as everyone else's. There have been some deductions. I do want to say that there is sixty-five thousand of this that is contingency only. So I've already told them, if they spend a penny of that, they're going to be owing me a lot more. So we're, we're still talking to them, trying to find other ways. But this is their best guess to get us through the project. In a previous agenda item, I requested, excuse me, we requested the use of PEG funds. And so incorporating those PEG funds into this, four hundred and seventy-eight thousand and change, we're basically asking that three hundred and forty-one thousand and some change of that be use of PEG funds. And that's the public education and governmental funds. And we have reviewed that to see what is eligible and believe those to be within reason. And that would still be a hundred and thirty-six thousand coming from our city hall budget, which we have worked out with Robbie, and there are still some funds in there for that.
In the original, I guess the original schedule, were we using, were we, were we allocating the PEG funds in there?
Originally, no, we did not have the PEG funds in there. So as we revise our revenues and expenses, as we bring to y'all, it will include PEG funds as a revenue source in, in the near future. Yes, sir.
And maybe realize the same thing, be able to set that money?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And do we have a definite that the PEG funds can be used? Are we still looking into that or where?
We, we researched that and we believe we are good. We believe we are, because they can be used for putting things out there on, getting the information out to the public and, and, and things of that nature. So we believe we are strong on that.
So we're, we're clear on that, it, it's okay?
Yes, sir.
Well, there's a thing, with the approval tonight, where are they able to move in and start, start working with wiring?
Right now, their plan, with approval tonight, on the eighteenth, ACS will be in town the week of the eighteenth to see what all is there, not there, or things of that nature. Because they've been waiting on certain things to be finished by the current contractor. And once they are sure what they're doing, they're going to time it out. And they're scheduled to be here early December. And they've told me six weeks, but because of the holidays, it may take a little longer than that. But right now, they're telling me six weeks, and I'm trying to hold them to six weeks and no contingency.
Other questions?
I move to approve item nine as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, any further question or debate? We'll call for a vote, Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number ten, should approve clarification of the original CIP schedule for information technology, the line item to reflect the purchase of high availability server to support laser fish upgrades. Mr. Farrell.
Thank you, thank you, mayor, thank you, counsel. Yes, we, we're just wanting to be very clear, one, because of the cost of this item, it is a little over a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And two, because on the, on the CIP budget, it was listed as computer switches and access points, that this, this item is going to be now used for the purchase of, purchase of a high availability server. That server is going to support an upgrade in laser fish, which is going to be used to help, help make this, make us more paperless. I think it is the ultimate goal. And, and also for indexing and managing our paperwork. And so this is just a tool to be used toward that, toward that end. But the city manager wants to be sure, wanted to be sure to make sure that everything is on top and, and crystal clear. So that's just what we're doing here, is just making it, making it obvious. So I don't know if we really need an item, an action, but we're just.
On the record, what was the money for?
So it's.
This was budgeted and everything, so.
This is part of the tax notes that you just approved.
Yes.
So, yes.
Any other questions?
Do you, do you like a, a motion on that or?
You just need to accept the report?
Yeah, we don't need a motion. Thank you, it's good enough.
Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Myself.
Thank you all.
Item number eleven, consider an update from San Patricio Municipal Water District regarding proposals fiscal year twenty-twenty-five raw water cost increases.
Yes, sir, we received a letter from San Patricio Municipal Water District on October thirty-first. And in that, they were saying that they were passing along, passing along a five percent increase in raw water costs. That was stemmed from an increase from the City of Corpus Christi. And then on top of that, or along with that, and another three percent increase to offset for a loss of consumption because they believe that, that City of Corpus is going to implement stage three water restrictions at the end of November, as early as the end of November. And I know we've been kind of thinking that this was, this was coming. And I believe it's whenever we go below, I think it's twenty, twenty percent, that, that that would happen. That cost increase, we kind of, we compared it with what the WILDAN rate study was and looking at some of the raw water cost and what they had expected. And the WILDAN rate study was, it was just under eight percent is what it, they had, they had projected the increase to be. And so the fact that we're looking at about an eight percent increase, that, that's good. So that's, that study, that worked out well for us with, with what Sam Pat says, says is coming down the line. So this is really just a, just an update on that for counsel.
Is there anything with that three percent, is there any, is there room on that? I mean, I, I get that when you use less water, they make less money, but at the same time, if we use less water, they treat less water, they buy less raw water. Why, why are we being penalized on, on using less water?
Want to negotiate?
Well, I don't want to.
Okay, we love.
I mean, I don't want to pay for water we're not using. Is that, yeah, that three percent seems, that's a, that's a, that's a big amount. And they're expecting us to use less as they're, just seems like, again, we're being penalized, a substantial amount.
Following their rules.
Is it, how, is there, are we contractually obligated to, to do that? Have, have we seen this, because it looks like the, the increase is, is, and then they're tacking on this three percent. Is that normal? I mean, I'm, I'm still the newest guy here, is that, is that something, that extra three percent something we see from time to time?
With the reduced usage, and, because the usage is going to fall more heavily on residential and it's going to, and it's going to fall on, on irrigation. Basically, you're not going to be able to water your yards at all. And so that's, they're, they're wanting to cover their fixed costs with that. Because of the reduced consumption, they're, they're wanting to cover their fixed costs with that increase. And so is, is that, is that, is it nor, is it acceptable? Yes. It's not, it's not outside the realm of possibility because they, they do, they're, they're largely a fixed, fixed asset entity. So they've got to cover those, those costs. And if we were to contest it, we would probably need to hire somebody with that, like a WILDAN, to come in and to say why they couldn't. And I don't, I don't know what that cost benefit would look like for three percent.
And I guess there, there's three percent, every other municipality that's buying from Corpus Christi, they're all appearing in the same thing.
I wouldn't think they would. I, I wouldn't think they would. We can always ask, I mean, I can ask, but.
Can we, can we, without hiring someone else, can, can staff, call them and go, look, this, this seems excessive, you know? Can you work with us on this? I mean, it sounds like a, it's like a little bit of time and a free phone call.
I'm happy to do that.
Can we do that?
Absolutely.
Oh, we pray for rain, and we don't get the twenty.
There you go.
Okay, I'll make this call and you do the rain.
Gotcha. Thank you, Vanessa.
Any other questions?
It's just an update as well.
Thank you.
Just requiring, and those, thank you, right?
Appreciate it.
Well, we thank him for doing his job.
I'm glad you're keeping up with it, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, item number twelve. See presentation on the AEP Texas Inc. rate case settlement.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, there was, I noticed at the last council meeting, there was, got to be some confusion about how many things we have going on, or resolutions that are going on with the, with the, our legal reps at Lloyd Gosling. And so what I wanted to do was, was to go back and talk about, or walk through what had happened in the finality that had happened with the, with the resolution that we had filed to, to dispute. It was like a hundred and sixty-five million dollar increase in, in, in distribution rates. And that was back on February twenty-ninth, where AEP filed an application to increase distribution rates by a hundred and sixty-five million dollars, or basically increasing the average residential customer by an increase of four, four dollars and fifty-nine cents a month. Well then, on March twelfth, Rockport City Council approved the resolution to intervene and suspend the AEP rate change for ninety days to allow time for Tom Brocato and his team to study the new rates further and possibly negotiate a lower rate. On June twenty-second, tentative agreement was reached that would raise rates only seventy million versus a hundred and sixty-five million, or ninety-three and a half million less than AEP's original request. At that time, Tom Brocato also recommended that cities adopt a denial resolution, which we did on June eleventh of twenty-twenty-four. And then on October eighth, the Rockport received a notice that's attached that, from Tom Brocato, that the tentative settlement was finalized and went into, went into effect on October first. So again, it was good, it was good that we had, had contested it because, you know, it helped, helped reduce it from a hundred and sixty-five to seventy million dollars, so that was good. So, and that one was separate and apart from the resiliency program that was presented last month. So just, and that was my bad, I need, I need to talk, bring these up to, to keep people informed and to try to separate what's going on. There's just a lot of stuff working on, especially following Yuri, the Yuri storm. Everybody's now, you know, trying to prepare or CYA for the next storm or whatever, whatever's going to, it's going to take, take us, take us down again. Something else is going to happen, but I just wanted to follow up on that, on that one, the hundred and sixty-five million one, with counsel.
Any questions, counsel? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Next item on the agenda is receive a presentation from city manager update.
Okay. This time, it's going to be easy. Our, most departments on their own have started putting together a department newsletter. So going forward, we will copy you on those. Everybody does something a little bit different. This is communications, they issue a challenge, they talk about events, upcoming trainings, things like that. A policy reminder that maybe needs to be tightened up a little bit. Those ladies are doing a great job. PD, it's forever, it's not a newsletter, it's a book. But, but they do an employee spotlight and getting to know our employees and what they're about is always very interesting to me. So we also are going to pull that employee spotlight in a monthly newsletter that we're going to start doing that's going to go out citywide. So these are internal. We're going to take that tip from the chief and do that on our, on our citywide one. Oh, there it is, employee spotlight, sorry. It was so long, I didn't get to it. Public Works, I can't read it from here, but I think it's usually about food. And we're good with that, so the.
I, I see the pumpkin spice in the pie and everything, so we're.
And, and the, the food curator is of that department, so we always look to see what's going on. I think they were, talk about their projects, they usually mention birthdays and anniversaries of employees. So that's fun to see. Parks and Recreation, they're always up to something. I think this is another long one, but Brittany keeps us up to date on what's going on, who's doing what, how events went. And we get to see the fun pictures of what she's done, which I don't think those necessarily get pushed out to the community very much. So it's interesting to see those. Her newsletter's really good, they have an employee of the month, I think, one for pool and one for parks that's up there, upcoming events. You can see that, safety tip, just little things that everybody needs to know. This is administration, that would be, you know, primarily us guys. Same thing, what's going on, what we plan to do, how we're going to do it. Those are interesting, like I said, we'll start copying you guys on that. And then these are the things that are coming up. And then these are the things that are coming up for the rest of the, for the rest of the year. So Andrea's taking notes as to which one she's going to be at, I don't see Brad writing anything down, but whatever. So we have, again, one council meeting in December, it'll be on the tenth. It might be, might be pretty heavy, you know, we're, it's the last one of the year and the only one in December. I think last year was pretty intense. One other thing to note is this Friday, we're closing at noon and cleaning everything top to bottom. We mentioned that to you guys. You should see piles of paper and piles of trash all around this building as we get rid of things. And we, billing and collections will stay open because it is not a good day for them to close. But they'll pick another day to close and clean and get ready for a move to a new city hall, which is sooner rather than later. So any questions on that? What? Absolutely, absolutely.
There's some, there was just something that I don't think I've had before, especially the new, the newsletter.
Yeah, there's, there's good information, I mean, it's, they distribute it among their coworkers, they've taken the initiative and done it themselves, which to me is pretty amazing. And I think it started with comms, communications, the first one you saw. They put it together and started, started sending it out to everybody. And it's a really good way to keep every department informed as to what the other departments are doing. We're disjointed in location and job function, and this is just a little bit of a way to tie us together. So it's good stuff.
I would say you leave the comm book out, but the mayor probably protests it maybe.
I know, he, he's, he's going to read the book. I mean, I read the book until it's like who to contact and I'm like, we're in nine-one-one. But no, I'm teasing, it's very good information, they put good stuff in there, I'm just heckling the chief a little bit. But it's good for us to all know what each other's doing, when we, when we don't get to see each other very often, so. All right, I'll send it to you, questions, concerns? Is there anything that I, that you need updated on that I have not hit or that you're not aware of right now?
Not that I'm aware of.
Little info on the Christmas party in December.
Yes, Christmas party is?
I send that out.
We'll send it out. What day is it?
We've got a little bit of time, but.
We closed Christmas in the past.
Friday.
Friday the thirteenth, how could we forget? So we would love to see y'all there, the employees will look forward to seeing you. Everybody will be in one room for a little bit, it's a good time. Door prizes? Yeah?
Yes.
You're not on the committee, are you? Sorry, we're going to hit y'all up for money, so just be ready. Yep, no problem. And we look forward to seeing y'all here, it's lunch and it's a good time. Everybody loves it, I think. Okay?
But we'll get some kind of email, remind something to.
Absolutely, yes, sir. Yep, you will not be left out.
I heard there's going to be snacks, so I'll show up.
Lots of snacks.
I'm there.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Oh, we should have had your golf cart here, y'all are getting a whole new little golf cart setup, prepare to be wowed. So you, if you, you don't want to miss the Tropical Christmas Parade on your, on your new. Huh? Oh, you poor thing. Ask Brad to send you a picture.
Can I drive? Do, do you need a candy thrower again? I, I was pretty good at that last time.
Yeah, I mean, if you're, if you've perfected your skill, we'll take it.
We're taking the net down, so it's not as hard to throw it out now.
Working that arm with the sling candy.
Look forward to it, look forward to it, it's, the guys have done a fantastic job, you're going to love it.
Please send pictures of it.
Public Works, yes, when I say the guys, that's the guys I meant, Public Works guys, they, they knocked it out of the park. Okay?
Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Next item, reports and counsel.
Don't have anything, we're, we're good.
All right. Ward three.
I got nothing.
Ward?
I always have something. Ran this pathways meeting last week, I did attend that. It's the biggest thing for us, the city, that needs to be concerned about, some of my concerns, kind of interesting thing. Trying to, Pathways is trying to connect where Chili Creek, where the Walmart is right there, they're trying to do a path all from there, from the whole, into the hotels, all the way to Fulton, and even off Fulton Beach Road and back. So people can have access to have their golf carts or bikes or walking from all the accessible areas. So we're working on trying to get all that worked out. I know we're working with Anchor, so they're, they need to talk with them about expanding the Chili Lake, Lake. And so we can have a drainage there and they can put an access trail around there as well. So that is the biggest thing coming out of that meeting. And then we also had the Arbor Day celebration last Friday. About a hundred people came and celebrated and we had it at the Fulton Mansion, it was a good time. I want to say thank you to my fellow council members and mayor for showing up and showing support for our trees here in town. So that was great, and thank you for the parks and for Carrie and Vanessa for all your guys' hard work getting it handled. And we had about six tree plantings this week and we ended on Saturday at the depot. And that was with the city of Rockport and was a great outcome. So thank you, everyone, for just showing the support for it. And that's all I have.
Thank you. We had Veterans Day ceremony yesterday down at the park and it was well attended by people, community. We had a lot of veterans there and we had some special guest veterans there that had extreme physical problems because of their service to our country and it was good seeing those people. It was great being around that number of veterans who had, who were combat veterans for our country. And, and it was a real special day. If you weren't there, try to make it next year for either Memorial Day or Veterans Day both. But it was, it was really nice ceremony. Other than that, we're going to go into executive session in reference to Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-oh-seven-one, oh-seven-two, oh-seven-four, oh-seven-six, oh-eight-seven, oh-eight-nine, oh-seven-four-five, regarding valuation city manager, city secretary, wildlife nuance, navigation district, Concho Street drainage and so forth. It is seven-twenty-seven and we are in executive session. It is eight-twenty-five, we are back in regular session.
Motion adjourned.
I have a motion adjourned, I have a second, I have a motion and a second, we adjourn.